All right. Number one on the list is out of the bills, and I think we got a pretty good handle on that. I do not have any license applications. They weren't in my mailbox, so I assume they're in there. Number three on the list is a credit card resolution for Mayor Carlson. We need to change that for him. So what was the limit on that? Do you remember?
Five dollars.
Five grand. Five grand.
We've always, we've kept everybody at five grand.
We have no problem with that. Just that we gotta get the verbiage difference there, huh?
Yeah. Time is now seven o'clock, second Tuesday of the month. The time set aside for the common council meeting. Roll call vote please.
Bryan?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Way?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Brenna?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Entertained a motion of second to approve the previous council, uh, common council minutes?
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, motion of second to approve the treasurer's report.
Sub moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now is the time for citizens forum. See if we have a few in the audience. Anybody like to speak? All right. Next item on the agenda would be the 2017 city audit from Hawkins. Monica?
Hello, everybody. Hi, Monica Hauser from Hawkins HCPAs. I'm gonna present the audit similar to I've done, what I've done in the past. For those of you new council members, what I do is kind of a quick summary of 2016 compared to 2017. I go through the summarized financial statements and not the big thick book because I'm sure you don't want me here all night. And then we will go through the, what we call the management letter as well. So I'm gonna start off with the, um, it's called the summary financial report. It was the last one I handed out to you. And so I'll note on the page two, um, this is the opinion page, that these summary reports do not include everything that are required to be in a full financial statement. So that's my disclosure, that these summary reports are only for council presentation. Everything else is in the big thick book. So on page three, this is the combined balance sheet for the city. You can see we show 2016 compared to 2017 numbers. I'll go over the large increases or decreases. So overall, our total assets and deferred outflows increased about 1.7 million in 2017. What makes up that increase? Our overall cash increased about 948,000. Can tell you a lot of that is we got the donation in on the splash park, but we didn't, we haven't spent it all as of 12/31/2017. So we're spending that money here in 2018. Our restricted cash increased about 32,000. Our inter-fund receivables, so these are amounts that we borrow between funds. So it's all within the city, but sewer may owe general fund, water may owe general fund. The details behind what's owed in each fund is in the full financial statements. And we're gonna talk about inter-funds here, um, later, but they increased 1.2 million during the year. Our capital assets decreased about 400,000, and that's just our normal depreciation. So depreciation is gonna decrease those. So overall, the increase in total assets, 1.7 million. Then if we look at the liabilities, or what we owe everybody, again, inter-fund payables, so we're still within the city, um, they increased 1.2 million. So you can see that the receivables for inter-fund are the same amount as the inter-fund payables. So that's a good thing. Us accountants like things to balance. Due to other funds decreased about 75,000, um, and a lot of this is just due to taxes and how much we collect and how much we owe other people at the end of the year. Long-term debt decreased about 322,000, and this is just our normal routine debt payments. So overall, our total liabilities increased 822,000. Our deferred inflows of resources increased about 47,000, and this had, this is our tax rule. So it's what we've collected in 2017, but it's really not for, we don't get the money until 2018, so that's reported as a deferred inflow. And then equity. So the first line there, net position, that's the water and sewer equity, and that decreased about 189,000 this year. So water sewer is a few, a few pages back, so we'll go in more detail there. The general fund balance decreased, my numbers, can't read my own writing, sorry about that.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, it looks like eight thousand, but I just, yeah, seventy-eight hundred dollars. Sorry. So general funds seem pretty consistent. You can see the graph on the next page shows, the blue is our total fund balance, the red is our unassigned fund balance. So that's fund balance that we don't have designated or restricted for any other purpose. And so common for municipalities, we look at a ratio. What's our unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our total current year expenditures? And this year, that number is 42 percent. Last year was 37 percent. Now, there's no real good magic number. Um, I like to say 25 percent is good. Now, if you get too high, there's the potential that taxpayers are saying, you know, why are you taxing us when you have all this fund balance? So, um, the good indicator from my perspectives, perspective is that we don't have to go out and short-term borrow. We can do, go through normal operations in a year. If, um, we don't get state grant money on time, we can still operate. We're not having to go to the bank to state payroll. So, um, so in my opinion, 42 percent's a good number. And then the last line are other fund balances, and I have that broken out into more detail a few pages back as well. On page four, so this is just general fund. This is the revenue for 2017. We compare budget to actual and then compare to 2016. So I'll talk totals first. In total, our revenue was over budget about 35,000. So being over budget in revenue is a good thing. Means we brought in more than we expected. And then if we compare 2017 to 2016, we had a decrease of about 259,000. And so what makes up that 259,000? Our inter-governmental revenue is down about 94,000. And this is our, um, shared revenue from the state. We had a highway safety grant in the prior year that we did not have this year. So those numbers tend to fluctuate a little bit, all based on formulas from the state. Public charges for services, so this is our ambulance. So the ambulance, we, we had an overall decrease of about 40, 41,000, and this was mostly in the ambulance department. And then our inter-governmental charges for services, this is our ambulance capital dollars. We had a decrease of about 110,000. So that's the revenue for the general fund. You can see the chart there shows the sources of revenue, major sources. Inter-governmental revenue is 37 percent, taxes 28 percent, charges for services 23 percent. And the other ones are fairly small percentages. On page five, these are the expenditures, and again, we're talking just the general fund. So we do the same thing, comparing 2017 budget to actual compared to 2016. So in total, our expenses were below budget, 14,600. So that's a good thing. That means we're following our budget, um, you know, making sure that we're doing a good job sticking to that, amending it if needed. Actual 17 compared to 2016, we had a decrease of about 227,000. Um, a big chunk of this, we had a decrease in our public works of about 106,000. And capital outlay. So capital outlay just fluctuates each year, what we're buying. In 2016, um, we had a vehicle purchase, we bought a tractor, and we had the big skate park, park project. 2017, we didn't have a whole lot of activity. We bought a copier and we had a cemetery building. So not a whole lot of capital outlay. Again, this is in the general fund. You can see the chart there shows the expenditures for the general fund. So where is, where's our money going to? Public safety is 49 percent. Public works is 32 percent. General government's 12 percent, and then culture, recreation, education, 5 percent. Next page is page six. This is our water sewer breakdown for the year. So we show water and sewer both 2017 and 2016 numbers. Just gonna do a very high level. Overall operating income for the water fund was 398,000. We had a loss in sewer of 134,000. And then once we take into account all that non-operating stuff, we had a change in net position in water of about 43,000. And sewer, we had a loss of 232,000. So I know we did a sewer rate increase in 2017, so just something to keep on the top of our minds and be looking at that. Do we need to up our rates again, or where are we sitting on that? You can see the graph on the next page shows the net income and loss. Water in blue and the reddish color is sewer. Page seven, these are all those other funds that I was referring to. So you can see we have special revenue funds, we have TIP, two TIPS, three TIPS in there, a library, CDBG, the fire department, the capital projects, and that's for that splash park. Um, and then the debt service fund is in there. So you can see the revenues and expenses going in and out of those funds for the year. And then overall financial information on page eight, kind of the overall summary. So our independent auditors report, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion. So that's the best opinion you could have. So it means we found the financial statements to be in good, um, condition. We didn't have any large adjustments that we had to make. General capital assets, we, we added about 28,000 of general capital assets during 2017. Again, I had mentioned 15,000 for the building, 91, 94 construction in progress is the splash pad, and then 42, 80 was equipment. We also got rid of a little bit of equipment in 2017. Water and sewer utilities, excuse me, we added 43,000 during 2017. And then our long-term debt. Can see that our debt decreased 263,000. So we have an outstanding, this is general obligation debt, balance of 1,724,293. And we're well below our statutory limit of 5.2 million. We also have 874,964 of lease revenue bonds outstanding. So those are not general obligations, so they are not included in that other number. Now, and then we have 6.2 million of water and sewer revenue bonds outstanding as well. And again, those are the revenue bonds, so they're not included in that general obligation balance. Our auditors report on compliance and internal controls, noted we didn't have any major issues. And then the communication with those charged with governance, that's the letter I'll go through last, unless anybody has questions on these. I know I flew through, I apologize. Okay, let's go through the independent auditors report on communications with those charged with governance and management advisory comments. I know it's wordy. So this is required communication to the council. We are required to report certain things in accordance with our government auditing standards. So on page two, you can see we have to report any estimates that we have in the financial statements. We consider depreciation as an estimate because we don't know how long the assets are gonna live. We have a net pension liability, and that's an estimate based on an actual calculation done by the state. And then municipal court receivables is an estimate as well. On page three, so this is where we would report if we had any difficulties during the audit, or if we had any major journal entries, disagreements with management. We had none of those things. The audit went very smooth, so good job to the staff, and, um, John Trauman does a good job helping get ready for the audit. Then, um, that really sums up that report. On page five, these are kind of the extra things, I guess we call management advisor comments. Just issues that we like to bring up, make sure that the council is aware of, they can do what they want with them. First one is due to, due from accounts. So this is that inter-fund stuff that I talked about, where we increased about 1.2 million during the year. So we have all these loans in between different funds. I'd like to take a look at it, have, maybe have John help start cleaning those up, or come up with a repayment plan. Sewer owes the general fund a fair amount of money. I think we did this years ago, because we had money in the sewer fund, so instead of going and borrowing from the bank, we borrowed from general fund. Now we just gotta have a plan to get that paid back, so it doesn't just sit there and grow, and we don't do anything about it over the years.
Uh, we've been doing a couple of resolutions a year, like we got one for tonight, for what we paid our first, uh, payment to the DNR.
Okay.
Um, I guess, how, how far can we go down on that, uh, cash account on the utility? You know, I mean, it's, it's really easy.
Yeah.
I can, I can put together a resolution for another 300, but, you know, I, you know, that last resolution with our USDA, we kinda waited till right near the end of the year when we got our, you know, monies and stuff, you know, and, um, so I don't know, if you, maybe we can talk about that further or something?
Yeah, it, it's a fine line. Obviously, you don't have, and we'll talk about sewer, you don't have 1.2 million dollars of cash sitting in there to just, oh, we're gonna repay it today. Um, so we need to come up with a plan, you know, if we're gonna, when we take a look at rates, then we need to increase the rates enough so that we can repay that. Obviously not in one year, but...
We're on a five-year plan right now. I think it's five years, isn't it, Rick?
Yeah, we did a five-year plan that increased the volume charge by 10 percent a year.
Okay.
Now, was that enough to attack some of this stuff? I guess that's, that's the question.
Right.
But the, the council approved that here a couple of years ago, a 10 percent increase annually for five years.
Yep.
Yeah, it was 15 or 16 when you started that.
Yeah. You really gotta look at a cash flow projection, and obviously things keep coming up every year where you end up having to do some repairs. Those sorts of things aren't gonna help repay this balance, so it's all about cash flow and, you know, when we get extra cash, can we repay that? So, and it's, sewer isn't the only fund. There's other funds in there too, so maybe John can help with that a little bit as well. Um, the next thing I have on there is write off old outstanding checks. So there's several checks outstanding on the bank reconciliation of the general fund that are more than three years old. And so it, it just makes things easier if you have a policy that, hey, after 15, 18 months, a year, whenever you want it to be, we're gonna write those things off. And now you can try to reissue whatever, um, but it's easiest if we get them cleaned up. The right thing to do is to send that money to the state, but you just develop a policy so you can get that stuff cleaned up. And then my last comment is on the library accounts. Um, so during our audit, we noted several months of library revenue accounts that had large variances in revenue. So when we looked into it further, what we noticed is that we don't see a regular monthly deposit from the library account. And so we're just recommending that either a policy be developed, or some sort of system to make sure that that money is getting turned in on a regular basis. It's hard to know what the true picture of the library accounts are if we don't have the cash sitting in the account. So, um, just my comment that we noticed a variance and just reporting that to you.
So, do we have or do, do we have them do this whenever they does that over there? They have to make monthly deposits?
They're supposed...
We've been asking for that.
I, yep, they're supposed to. I'll tell you it's not happening, so I'm reporting that to you.
Thank you.
And I tell all of you, um, new members as well, if you ever have a question, feel free to contact me. Um, I am happy to answer questions. I'm not gonna bill you for every question you ask me, so, um, Joe has my contact information, or you can look it up online too, so...
Can I ask a quick question? I'm on the library board.
Okay.
So we'd like to get this resurrected. Have you got some examples of how other libraries might do this?
Usually, it's just a formal policy that, you know, receipts, they have to be turned in every week, or every month, whatever, or we're seeing that it'll get done on a regular basis, and then there's a lapse. It'll be a couple, two, three months, and then a large amount will come in.
Okay.
So it's more of a...
Once a month is fine. I got it.
Policy, and then somebody's gotta make sure it's happening. That's the problem.
Okay.
But do you notice...
So is that something, Joe, we could get set up with you to make sure that there's some checks and balances? Because as a board, of course, we're thinking that it's happening, and if it's not, we need to follow up on that. So monthly is...
There's a lot of cash coming in, so, you know, I might recommend every two weeks.
Okay.
The cash isn't doing any good, sitting over there.
Right.
Obviously, cash left is a risk. So if you don't have it sitting there, if it's in the bank...
Good.
There's less risk.
Other librarians that worked there years ago were very punctual on getting, you know, fine monies and, and that over to the, to our charger. And, and there's been, it's gotten pretty slack, and there's really, I don't think, you really need to have that much money over at the library. I mean, like, we don't either. I mean, treasurer gets it, and we deposit it, you know, so I mean...
Yeah. Well, and we've started selling other things, so that's increased the amount of sales coming in, but I agree.
And Bobby takes, you know, she records all the receipts when they come in, and so maybe you have a system that Bobby lets you know, you know, when the amounts come in and how much they are, and then you can track, kind of where, you know, if it's always 100 bucks every couple of weeks, just so you know what's normal. And then if we have a big spike or a big drop, we can identify what those things are, why, the cause of that.
Good.
I think what I'll do is I'll, I'm gonna be a little more active with Bobby. She can tell me when it's not coming in, so maybe I can give you a call or something, or...
Yeah, that'd be fine.
That'll work?
Absolutely.
Would it be possible to have a set home? Capita, the librarian, I said, each month, and everyone else?
Well, I mean...
Keep a, keep a budget at the home there? I don't know, but...
Well, and cash drawers, I mean, I guess it can vary from place to place, but, I mean, there is like a minimum cash, cash account for change and different things like that, you know? And that could be kind of administrative thing, says how much, you know, you want 50 dollar cash drawer, you know what I'm saying? And, and then, uh, you, you start getting a lot more money than that, then you need to make a deposit, deposit it over here with our treasurer, and then she can put it into the bank.
That's what I'm saying, if they do it monthly, you just set a, my mom would say, okay, at the end of the month, we've got a thousand dollars, then you've got a 200 dollar cash drawer. Rest of the money comes and gets deposited here.
I think that's already happening. I'm pretty sure she already has a till or whatever, whatever they keep there. Obviously, they don't need a ton of change sitting at the library, but I think they keep, they already have, if it's 25 bucks, whatever it is, is kept, and they bring everything else over.
But they're just not doing it every month.
Yeah.
They need to do it like at your meeting or something. They need to get a date, set it down, and do this, because...
I think, if, you know, depending upon the amount of cash that we're seeing, it probably two weeks is the appropriate.
Two weeks? That's probably two. Yeah. I'll talk to Bobby again, and then we'll, uh, I'm gonna get a little more involved in this, a little more active.
Well, it lets you and I touch base, and then I'll just follow up with our...
Do both. You have to do both.
Need anything from me, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, very good report.
Thank you.
Very good, Joe, very good staff report. In the end there, she, she appreciated the staff of...
It's gotta keep Monica happy, you know?
Well, she is the auditor, so, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is committee reports. First one, Ways and Means, Chairman Kuhn.
Ways and Means has one meeting to report, and I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Second. Motion of second to accept the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Ways and Means Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Members present were Garrett Kuhn, Robert Schultz, Beth Thomas, and Brian Krupczak. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Larry Krupczak, August Wyack, Rick Schmidt, Curtis Brede, Herman Steiner, and Brad Hamilton. Number one, we audited all the bills. Number two, we recommend a $5,000 credit card resolution for Mayor Carlson. Number three, recommend cell phone for the mayor on the city account. Number four, recommend a $250 donation for the Nacusa Youth Athletics Golf Outing. Make a motion, uh, to recommend items two, three, and four for adoption.
Second. Uh, motion of second to accept the items two, three, and four of the Ways and Means Committee meeting agenda for the report. Roll call vote please, Mr. Ross. Schultz?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Next committee report is Public Works, Chairman Krupczak.
Public Works has one need to report on. I move to have the minutes accepted as read.
Second. Uh, motion of second to accept the minutes of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, Public Works meeting was held on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, at 3:30 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupczak, Garrett Kuhn, August Wayack, and Robert Schultz. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Brian Krupczak, Rick Schmidt from the DPW, and Barry Benson from the USDA. Item one, Barry Benson from the USDA Department of Wildlife Services gave a presentation about bush management at Riverside Park. Recommend a roundup session for approximately $2,500. Item two, recommend water and sewer credit of $541.32 to Angene Decorah at 415 Prospect Avenue. Item three, discuss garbage and refuse collection. Item four, recommend the DPW director to submit paperwork for the Elric program. Item five, recommend water tower clean incorporated to clean water tower for approximately $4,500. Item six, discuss showers install at the water plant. Item seven, recommend 2018 wastewater plant projects at a cost of approximately $16,000. Item eight, discuss the thank you sign for Culture Park. Item nine, discuss the safety updates. Any questions? If not, I move to adopt items one, two, four, five, and seven.
Second. Uh, motion of second to, to adopt items one, two, four, five, and seven of the Public Works Committee Report. All, our roll call vote please, Mr. Ross. Wayack?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Brenna?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Uh, next committee report is Property Recreation and Human Affairs, Chairman Krupczak.
Property Recreation and Human Affairs has one meeting. I move to have the minutes accepted as read.
Second. Motion, uh, second to approve the minutes of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nacusa Common Council, a Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, May 1st, at 6:00 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Brian Krupczak, Chairman, Brad Hamilton, Secretary, Beth Thomas, and Curtis Brede. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Garrett Kuhn, Sean Woods, Mike Harchey, Rick Schmidt, and I have an attached list. Would you like me to read those, or...
No, you don't.
Number one, discuss ATV roads and trails. Two, recommend open construction for splash pad and park improvements for $297,875, money to be spent from the splash pad fund. We discussed the Nacusa Events Ordinance. We recommend Solaris install Wi-Fi at Coutsor Park at no cost to the city. Recommend splash pad add in the Nacusa Visitors Guide for $100. We discussed comprehensive park and open space plan, and discussed the community strategic
Second. Motion second to adopt items two, four, and five of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs report. Roll call, both please, Mr. Rush.
Bretta?
Aye.
Bryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Wyack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business you need to take care of? All right, and continuing new business, first item is the Rome ambulance agreement. Chief Myers?
So, as some of you know, we've been working on a memorandum of understanding to place our second ambulance down in Rome. For those of you that aren't aware, the idea is that they are gonna build a station for us, and it would be in conjunction with their police department that they need to either renovate or build. So they're gonna build a new station for the police department, and also have quarters, garage, whatnot, for our ambulance. At this point, we had a MOU that was drafted, working with them, we kind of worked out to find, to find tuning with that, had presented it at our last public safety meeting, and at this point, so then we need to have a meeting or move forward, or decide if there's some issues to discuss with that MOU, that type of stuff. So, right now, where they sit on the Rome side, not this coming Thursday, the following Thursday, so the 17th, they'll be voting on whether to accept that MOU or not on their end, and so we just need to kind of keep the ball rolling on our end and see where we need to go with that. So, I don't know if we want to, I would recommend probably setting up a meeting with them if anybody has any questions on the MOU, or I guess I would ask the council, specifically the public safety committee, where we would like to, how you'd like to proceed at this point. I can certainly forward out, I probably should have done that before, for, I believe there's some new folks on the public safety committee, and I can certainly email out that MOU, so you guys have a copy of that, so you can see what's going on. Kind of a changing of the guards in the middle of the process, so...
Sure.
Did, Mr. Mayor, I mean, did you get a, has everybody gotten a copy? Why don't you send everybody a fresh copy?
Yeah, I will, yeah, I know there's, some of the new folks on the city council that have probably not gotten that, so I can send that out.
Then make sure you send them a copy too, so we can get over. And what, what were you looking at? Were you looking at, were you looking at a full committee meeting, or what, is that, how do we want to proceed? I'm taking a committee meeting to meet with them.
I think we probably need to sit down with them and just make sure that we're all on the same page with that MOU, make sure that nobody has, I know I sent it out before, and there was really not much feedback with it, as far as any issues.
All right. The last one, if it's, the new one's gonna be the same. I had no issue with it.
It's gonna be the same, yes. There were some things in there, we established, at one point or another, they wanted to specify a response time for our ambulance, or, I'm sorry, for our folks to get to the ambulance on the Rome side. Initially, that was drafted at, I believe, like, three minutes. We expanded that out to six minutes. And the reason for that is based on our three-mile radius that we have as our policy, and using the formula from Rand McNally, it equals out to about a six-minute ETA for that three-mile. But I'll make sure that those changes are in there, and I will send that out, and then, I don't know if we have to have another public safety meeting before we set up that meeting with them, or if we can just establish it through email, once I give you a chance of, give you folks a chance to look at that MOU, and then we can establish a meeting with them. Kind of looking for some direction of how you'd like to proceed.
Is that something that we have to run through committee and get some sort of approval on?
We ran it through committee, and like I said, that's when we came up with the six, we came up with the six minutes and stuff.
Do we actually have a vote on that? To accept it? Because, I mean, if we go through committee and accept it, still gotta vote through the council and the...
I don't recall it both being done, if I remember correctly.
I'm trying to think, and I don't remember.
I don't think we did. I've got no problem just going with committee into a, into a meeting with them, and then reporting back to the council, or however you want to do it, it's actually yours, so I mean, you know?
Yeah.
It doesn't make a difference.
I want to do it the easiest way, but I don't want to involve, if we can possibly not spend money, that'd be great. Are they looking for a meeting with the committee? Do you know if they're looking for a meeting with the whole committee, or?
Basically, right now, what they're looking for is kind of where we stand on this MOU. Are we committed towards doing it? Is there issues that we need to resolve? You know, they, it's kind of like where, we kind of know where we stand, we're kind of in the game, we got our cards at the table, and they know where they stand, it's a matter of getting together so that they know, are they gonna, because the building will not be built until they figure out this MOU of what's going on. So that's kind of pivoting on getting this memorandum of understanding.
Well, and if we, like, if the mayor and I would go with you on this, and we say get a tentative, as long as it's, we'd have to be brought back to the council.
Yep.
It is, we, the committee, and then the council.
Sure.
If they're okay with that, I would have no problem with it, save us one committee meeting.
Do you know, they need, they need...
For that one, no, just to, just to get it nailed down, but that, what we do then is we bring it back to a regular meeting.
Sure.
To the regular monthly meeting.
Should have an extra one.
Yeah, otherwise, you know, save us 250 bucks if we do that.
Yeah, if they can, well, the next committee meeting would be about the initial one.
Right.
Is that, is that gonna be an okay time period for them? You know, with the...
I would have to check with them. Our initial timeline put us at the beginning of May to see where we sit, where we sat with that MOU. And that was that timeline that was established back in, I think it was like October, November, when we first met with them here, and we've stayed pretty on target with that up until now, you know, again, like I said, it was the beginning of May to kind of see where we're at, and if we're gonna move forward and stuff like that.
They've had new people on their council, right, on ours.
Yep, and they may be very well in the same position where some of their people have some questions.
If they're okay with that, the reason I say that is because otherwise, if they want it done on the old timeline, you're talking about committee meeting and the council meeting, to get it rectified, you know, get it done by then. And if we can keep from spending the extra cash, like you said, you know, if we can just do it on a regular timeline, here as far as our monthly meetings go, if they're okay with that, I'd be tickled pink with it.
Are they just looking for, are they just looking for some representation from the city at the meeting?
Yeah, I think they're looking for somebody above my pay grade that's gonna say yea or nay that we're in for it, or we're not.
There's nobody in this place above your pay grade.
No, 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 no.
We're all your bosses, but none of us can pay you. Why don't, let's, let's put it this way, why don't you set something up?
Sure.
Mayor, you want to come along? If you got, if you're, if it's a good meeting for you?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I can be there, or if I can't be there, I'll, I'll get one of the other committee members to show up, that way we're good on that. And then, let's talk, and then we'll bring it back, whatever we get, we bring back to committee.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, everybody will get a copy, and if any questions rise up, then...
Yeah, please forward them to me, or we can address it at some point. I'll get that MOU out right away, and then tentatively, that meeting wouldn't be till probably after the, well, it'll be after their meeting on that Thursday, I'll be gone on vacation over that weekend, so it'll be that following weekend, what was that, the week of the 20th, I believe it is, so, wouldn't be the earliest, but we'll...
I'll be on duty, so that works.
So we'll gather some dates, and we'll get moving forward with that.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is budget resolution.
Okay, budget resolution, got a little typo in there. The backside of it is where we already paid this environmental loan, we paid 256,000, and this, and basically, it's, how this works is that we pay, we pay that out of the general, and this is basically an environmental loan that affects our utility. So we're paying it out of the general, but it's just gonna be a due-to, due-from thing, so we're just paying the general back for that amount of money, and we do it for this loan payment, we'll do another one for the USDA loan payment, and then we have to look at, we're kind of like what Monica was saying, maybe if we can, if we can swing it, put, do maybe another resolution at some point in the year, but I need a motion in a second to adopt that resolution, so...
Second.
Yes.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution transferring the money from the general fund to the water. Roll call, both please, Mr. Rush.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Wyack?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Wyack?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Are there any other issues?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next item is approval of the claims.